Five, four, three, two.
Good evening. Tonight, the Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council is hosting a forum for candidates seeking a seat on the West Contra Costa Unified School District's Board of Education. My name is Don Gosny and I will be the moderator for tonight. Starting with this election, the district was required to elect members of their council or their board by wards, with all five wards electing a new board member. The ward maps will only be good for two years, and as soon as the census results are made available, the district, using an independent redistricting commission, will redraw the maps. The ward boundaries are somewhat convoluted and difficult to describe in a few words, but there is a basic outline of the wards. Ward one encompasses Hercules and Pinole and extends on the shoreline down towards the Richmond Golf Course area. Ward two encompasses the area west of 23rd Street, the southeast corner of northeast, north and east neighborhoods, a large part of the south side of Richmond, along the North Richmond and Parchester Village. Ward three encompasses a small area around Richmond High School, the northwest part of north and east neighborhood, and almost all of San Pablo. Ward four encompasses a horizontal area stretching from Carriage Hills through to the Hilltop area. And Ward five encompasses Point Richmond through to the Richmond Annex, El Cerrito, and up to Richmond Heights. If you're scratching your head wondering what ward you're in, please email me at dongosny@comcast.net, and I'll email a link to an easy, interactive map. That's dongosny@comcast.net. In Ward three, only one candidate filed to run. As it's being unchallenged, he was not invited to participate tonight. All of the other candidates were invited to participate in this forum. All safety guidelines put out by the county health officials are being followed tonight. West County voters are smart and engaged. If a candidate wants to support or wants the support of the voters, they have to earn it by showing that they know what's important to the voters, that they can listen to their constituents, even those that cannot vote, and work for the rest of the school board to find real solutions to these problems. The questions were solicited from a wide array of sources before determining which would be most appropriate for this forum. We've heard questions from earlier forums and tried to select subjects that had not already been covered. Each candidate will be allowed 75 seconds each for an opening and closing statement and 10 questions asked of each candidate. The order in which the candidates will speak was selected using a random number generator. And with that, let the forum begin. We will start off the forum tonight with opening statements, 75 seconds each, and we're going to ask Ms. Smith Folds to go ahead and start.
My name is Jamila Smith Folds. I'm running for West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board Trustee, Ward one. I've been in the field of education for over 15 years, from classroom teacher, parent volunteer, and community leader to school board trustee. I will work to ensure transparency and accountability to policies while ensuring programs are equitable, sustainable, and have built-in capacity for measured growth. I was born and raised in Alabama. I've lived in West Contra Costa for 20-plus years. For me, school was a place where knowledge flowed like a river that everyone could drink from. My relationship with school led me to graduate from Auburn University, earning a double major in history and English with a credential to teach. As a classroom teacher, I saw how important it was to intentionally create a space for students and parents. Teaching in California and Alabama provided a clear awareness that that relationship I had with school was not one that everyone carried. It was not enough for schools to be a river. They had to be barrier-free and provide containers. I'm a parent volunteer that has navigated the educational system. I know what it takes to fight for teachers and advocate for students on the front line. Being a boots-on-the-ground community leader means that I create and maintain relationships. As your school board trustee, I will set direction, provide support, and continue to advocate for our students. It's my authentic experience as classroom teacher and a staunch parent volunteer and community leader, not to mention a parent of three girls, that motivate me to run for your school board trustee.
Thank you very much. Ms. Eunade Burrell. Are you speaking?
I am. I was waiting for the green.
It doesn't start till you start.
Hi, I am Eunade Burrell, and I'm running for the West Contra Costa Unified School District for Area Four. I'm running because there is no other place I would rather be than to share my time, talent, and treasure, and having a lifelong impact on the education of all students in the district. I have lived in Richmond for 25 years, and I have more than 20 years of corporate experience, and I have leadership integrity and experience for this seat. When we reimagine education for black and brown students through equity lens, then in making them a priority. When we consider the hard work we have to do ahead of us, given the learning loss because of the pandemic. When we address the digital divide beyond a Chromebook and a hotspot. When we stop the bleeding of 20-plus schools being in program improvement for over 20 years. When we listen to parents so we can give them their needs. When we look at safety beyond policing and look at the social determinants of health, mental health, food insecurities, and housing, then we really begin to make change. I come to this table unbought and unbossed, and I don't owe any favors. I'm committed to making sure that every policy, practice, and program is student-centered and through an equity lens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Weisinger, you're next.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Weisinger, and I'm running for West Contra Costa Unified School District Board Trustee in Area Five. I'm running because I want to move this district from equality to equity, which is a very important distinction. I'm a Richmond native, and my West Contra Costa Unified School District story starts in 1990, when my family moved just around the corner from here to the Hilltop community area, and I became a student at Pinole Middle School. I've attended West Contra Costa Unified School District School all of my life. I graduated from El Cerrito High School, which is the place where I learned to be a leader. My core values are going to be to address fiscal oversight, COVID response, school safety, and our budget issues. It's very important to me that we do have a person of color that is representing Ward five. I believe it's important in Ward five, we will be the tipping point of our district. That's me, Carolyn Weisinger. Vote for me in Area Five.
For the future questions, can you move a little bit closer to your microphone, please? Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. O-three Christian.
Good evening. My name is O-three Christian, and I am the lead campus safety officer at El Cerrito High School, a youth minister, and a candidate for the West Contra Costa Unified School District for Area Two. I'm running because I care about our children and I want them to succeed. My priorities are safe schools, centering the budget around student success, and retaining and hiring the best staff for WCCUSD. Once again, my name is O-three Christian, and I humbly ask for your vote on November the 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dimitrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to first start by thanking the Fairmead Hilltop Council and the Hilltop Community Church for having us. My name is Dimitrio Gonzalez-Hoy, and I'm running for Area Four, for the West Contra Costa Unified School District. I am running because the last eight years I have been a teacher, an advocate, and president of the teachers' union. During that time, we have created really positive change, but there's so much more to do. I'm really proud that I've been involved in majority of our committees. I have been involved in majority of the new policies we have created the last few years. And I have also, I'm really proud of the collaborative culture we've built between labor and students and families in the last four years. This work is really personal for me. I have been a teacher here. My students still go through our schools. My wife is a teacher, and her family works for our schools. I deeply believe in public education. Public education saved my life, and I want to give back to our community and to our schools. It is critical for me to continue to support African-American students and English-language learners that have fallen through the cracks. It is also critical that we continue to work on the staff retention and quality of our educators in this district. I hope that you'll learn more about me by going on my website. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lupe Agnana.
My name is Guadalupe Agnana, and I am running for the WCCUSD District Number Two. I am a lifelong Richmond resident. I'm also a parent here in the district with two students currently in our schools, two that have graduated. My investment has been a lifelong investment. I grew up in Richmond. I attended West Contra Costa Schools, and now as a parent, I have been really invested in making sure that our students are getting the services that they deserve, that our parents are getting the communication that they need to be able to support their students. I believe that we need parents at the table, current parents at the table, to be able to fully form a board that is representing the whole community, not just one side. So having a board member who is a mother, having to transition through the things that other parents are transitioning through, especially in these times of COVID, is very important. I believe that we need to focus on community schooling. I believe that we need to focus on student-centered education, and at the end of the day, on making sure that we have transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your opening statements. We'll be going to the first question in just a moment. Most of these questions will have a couple of lines to frame the situation. You all maybe know about it all because you're deeply engaged in our district, but many of the people watching on the videos may not know so much. Okay? On the question number one, "The superintendent's contract has not been extended, so we need to have a new superintendent in place when this school year ends." The questions, three-parter. Responding in a short sentence, once you're sworn in, would you support retaining the current superintendent? Second question, if the board hires a new superintendent, what will you look for? And third question, please explain your vision of giving the community a seat at the interview table. Mr. O-three Christian.
As the current board, already set the motion in place to look for a new superintendent. So, once I'm sworn in and with the other board members, that's what we would do, is continue the agenda. We would push forward the agenda to look and for a new superintendent, and then we want to make sure that we do the best job as a board to make sure our district is going to become a strong and vibrant district, and that we do the job as the board. Thank you.
Ms. Lupe Agnana.
Okay, um, let me see what the question was. So I wouldn't support keeping the superintendent. I think we're past that time right now. I think, you know, electing a new superintendent that aligns with the values of the community, you know, is going to be a must in electing a new superintendent. I also think that we need to ensure that decisions are in line with the community, that they're active in schools, in our schools, that they know the culture, and that most of all, that they're willing to come in and understand our community. I think we need to, from the beginning, set our standards. We need to really make sure that they are accountable, that they're going to be held accountable, that we're setting the standards, that we're pushing them to have that transparency with the board members. And I think that we, as board members, set the tone to what the new superintendent is going to be like, and I think we need to, from the very beginning, go strong and go hard so that we are able to establish, you know, what we want to see in a new superintendent.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dimitrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yeah, this is a critical question. As a board, we hire and fire the superintendent. That's really the one employee that we manage. Would I support the current superintendent if he was to apply? Honestly, he would really have to make a very strong case that he can transform our district to a different place than we are now. It is because of people under him that we have the current budget crisis, and that we have not advanced in many different areas for our student achievement. So he would really have to prove to me that he would have a vision, a different vision than what he has currently. What would I look for? I would look for a superintendent that can see our schools through an equity lens, that would be inclusive of families, teachers, and students, that would have a vision and a plan larger than the current roadmap on how to increase academic achievement. I agree that someone who understands urban education and has taught or been a principal or administrator at a district that looks like ours, because the challenges are very different than many others, and we don't have time for a learning curve. And lastly, someone who can listen to every single group. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Carolyn Weisinger.
Thank you. So, in looking at our issue with our superintendent, I support the board's direction that they're already going in as far as looking for a new superintendent. I think that, you know, as a person who actually taught here in the district recently as recently as a year ago, I feel like students of color have been basically abandoned by the current direction of the district. And I think that it's important that if we are determining our core values, and that's something you're going to hear me say a lot tonight, is that we, as a board and as a district, need to determine our core values and determine our priorities. If we're saying we're going to be an anti-racist institution, if we're saying we're going to be a non-crosser institution, we need to have a superintendent that can create policies and put those policies into place. They really need to come in understanding critical race theory so they can put a plan in front of us that will go in the direction that we want to go. I think the community does definitely need to be very involved in it, but I think it's important that we're looking for someone, as I said, who understands race theory and understands how to build equity, someone who's willing to be made accountable, and also someone who's willing to listen to the stakeholders, the stakeholders being our community members, our parents, and really our students. So those are the three things that I'm looking for. We definitely need to move forward into a different direction for this district.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jamila Smith Folds.
I think that the board has already made their decision about the superintendent, so I will support that decision. When it comes to what am I looking for, I'm looking for a superintendent who is humble. To be a leader, you need to have a character value of humility. I'm looking for someone that understands that they are a servant. They are there to serve the community, serve the children, and serve at the will of the board. The board sets a direction. I'm looking for a superintendent that understands and has a vision, because if you don't know what direction, if you don't know where you're going, it doesn't matter what direction you go. So I need someone that has a vision of where they're going. As far as how do we get community to the table, we ask them. We make sure that we are putting it out there and letting the community know that we want their voice at the table. We leave enough space to where they can come to the table, and we remove the barriers. We move barriers by having meetings early in the morning where parents who are working can't attend. We remove barriers by having only the location of these meetings at one spot in the district. We remove barriers because we want to hear the voice. If we want to really know what the community wants, we need to ask the community. If we really want a superintendent, if we really want a superintendent that can guide our district and help with our district, then we need to ask for that, and we need to make sure that we're getting someone who wants to be here. It's about choosing our district.
Thank you very much. Ms. Eunade Burrell.
The current board has already made a decision to move forward and seek in a new superintendent, and I support that. When it comes to the public and having their involvement, it's beyond one meeting. It's beyond one conversation. It's not only inclusive, but it's inclusive in different directions. And what I mean by that is, we definitely have to have our language interpretation. We definitely have to have that expanded as well. It cannot be cut off when folks hear things they don't want to hear. We have to hear those hard questions and have answers for the public, keeping them at the table, not just for this search, but period, always keeping public at the table. What do I look for in a superintendent? We have these lofty resumes. We're going to get a lot of lofty resumes. What is your track record? Have you ever transformed an institution, particularly education? Yes, you talk about equity and inclusion? That's great. What have you done? Do you have a track record to show that you actually have done equity work? And also, don't settle for mediocrity. Mediocrity is just allowing systems to stay in program improvement for 20 years. That's mediocrity. Really looking for that diamond in the rough, and it's going to be tenacious to do that, and I'm ready to do that.
Thank you very much. We're doing well. Got quite one out of the 10 done so far. Good. All right, question number two. Everywhere we turn, we're hearing that we need equity in our schools, that we need to look through an equity lens. That first question, no fewer than six times, was those two words used. Please tell us what those two terms mean to you. Ms. Burrell.
Equality and equity are two different things. Equality is everyone started out with the same resources, access to everything equally. Equity is bringing the folks to that point. You can imagine, that is a very big jump, but it's not impossible. So equity lens looks something like this. I'm looking at a situation, say a curriculum, for instance. I'm not taking that curriculum and just spreading it across every sixth grader, every fifth grader, every third grader. I'm looking at that curriculum through the equity lens in terms of learning, different ways of learning. When we talk about our students with disabilities, it's a different kind of learning. We have to look at it very much multi-dimensional. So, yeah, equity lens has been this phrase that's kind of thrown around a lot because it's popular, but really, if you don't understand it, and more importantly, if you don't acknowledge that it exists, it's going to be very difficult for you to implement it. So to me, and for me, equity lens is making sure that I'm not taking one piece of pie and say, "Let's cut it evenly and disperse it." I'm taking that pie, and I'm looking at every person who's being served and their needs at that level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Weisinger.
To add on to what Ms. Burrell said, it's very important that we do make that distinction between equality and equity. Equality is, as she said, giving everyone the same thing. So if I have a pie, and I'm giving everyone the same slice, everyone the same amount, everyone's going to have a different view of what they have received. Equity is looking at everyone and giving them what they need so everyone can arrive at the same point. And I did a class with Crembley Crenshaw, who came up with the term intersectionality. And the way that she put it, she's talking about looking at it through a frame. If you're framing it in a certain way and you're keeping people out of the frame, you're not going to be able to give those same folks who are impacted by the same issue what they need. If I'm creating a frame where I only have the most affluent, if I have the only, the most vocal people who are in my frame, they're going to be marginalized folks who I'm not going to be able to serve. So equity is making sure that everyone that's a part of this district, every child, every parent, is included in that frame so we can create policies and solve these issues that affects everyone. That would be equity.
Okay. Dimitrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with everything my colleagues have said about equity. To me, equity absolutely means providing the supports that every student needs. The reason why I started my advocacy work is because, as a classroom teacher, I saw my bilingual students fall into the cracks because of the system they were in, not because of the support at home or because of other reasons, but simply because of the system. Our data shows our English-language learners and African-American students in our district have been failing for decades. It's clearly critical that every decision the board makes makes them with an equity lens. Now, that means looking at specifically what every kid needs. And to do that, we need to understand what happens at every school. The needs of Kensington Elementary School are very different than the needs at Montalban or the needs at Lupine Hills. We have to be able to talk to every single stakeholder at the sites where the decisions are being implemented, and understand what is it that they need, what is it that they need in order to succeed, because it goes farther than just, you know, the pencil and the paper. It's also about nutrition. It's also about getting them the resources such as psychologists, such as counselors, everything that they might need in order to succeed. So equity, to me, is providing them everything they might need at school and above and above.
Thank you very much. Lupe Agnana.
So I also agree with everything everyone said about equity. To me, equity goes, I think, beyond that. It goes to not just, you know, around the education of our children, but also giving them the supports that they need to be healthy, to be able to learn, to be able to succeed. So I think we have to really focus in on a whole child's well-being and their families, and be able to then cater to the different needs of every school site. So I think involvement, building relationships with admins, with parents, with community members, to be able to really see, I mean, we have enough data within our district. You know, we have these parent surveys. We have these youth surveys. I think those surveys are really important. Those surveys can be used to really see what the needs of particular school sites are. And then accountability. So once we have, you know, what each school site needs, then we have to be accountable for it. We have to make sure that we can give them those services, that we can give them the support, and that we are checking up, making sure that we're following through. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O-three Christian.
Thank you.
Same question.
Same question. Equity lens, we all must have an equity lens. Policy must be set across the board for everything. Superintendent must set the policy. The school board must set the policy, and making sure that equity is across the board with everybody, making sure that every culture, background, making sure that all races are working cohesively together, making sure that we be the best school district there is in this area. So as equity, we must put in and making sure that our teachers, and not only that, but administrators, and making sure everybody is following the policy. And also, with the current issues that's going on right now, we're dealing with racism and discrimination that's going on in the United States of America today. So we have to fight and eradicate that through policy, and making sure that we build a strong district for our young people, for our parents, and making sure that we love on our young people, and making sure love is cohesive throughout our whole school district. Thank you.
Okay. Crespi and Pinole Middle Schools.
Don, you forgot me.
I didn't forget you. I was leaving you out. Sorry. Thank you for keeping me on my toes. Jamila Smith Folds.
Everyone eats, but is everyone digesting the food? That's how I think about equity. Is the food that's being made with the eater in mind? Did you ask, are you allergic to this? Are you able to handle this spice? Equity is understanding that we may all eat, but do we all enjoy the food? As school board trustee, I'm the cook in the kitchen. As an experienced school board teacher, parent volunteer, and community leader, I'm the most qualified to cook and feed all of our children. Equity is making sure that everybody is enjoying the same meal. Thank you.
Okay, if I move on now?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Let me swing the camera back around. All right. Crespi and Pinole Middle Schools share their campuses with charter schools, and we've heard numerous complaints from students, teachers, and parents about this co-sharing. The question, since Crespi's student population is so low, would you advocate merging Crespi into Pinole Middle and having the two charters co-chair Crespi? Lupe Agnana.
Well, that's a new option. I wouldn't relocate our students. I think our students need to be, you know, where they feel comfortable, where they've been. I think we need to figure out solutions, especially when it comes to co-inhabitant of our charter schools within our public schools. I don't think that, you know, we have to keep this shuffling going around. You know, we need to focus in on making sure that we're able to maintain the health of our students and their well-being. You know, having cohabitation sometimes with charter schools and public schools, that's a really big inconvenience for a lot of families. Especially, you get to see the good and the bad of both sides. So, as Don stated, you know, having charter schools together, I agree that charter schools need to have their own site. I don't know, I wouldn't agree exactly from taking the site from our students to cohabit, you know, to charter schools together. I think we need to figure out solutions. But I also don't think we need to be, you know, working up, you know, the bill when it comes to these charter schools. I think, okay, thank you.
She just saw the red light. Okay? Carolyn Weisinger.
Well, you know, Don, the Pinole Junior Nighting Me says absolutely not, but I know that you want more than that as an answer. I definitely don't think that we should consider co-locating our two WCCUSD schools together. I think that we already have enough questions on the board, you know, around the way that we do co-share our sites, because we are mandated to provide sites to these charter locations. For me, the idea of actually giving up a site and putting our students together so that the charters can have one whole school just does not seem like something that, well, even, we talk about building culture. You know, it's not always for me about numbers. It's about really building the culture. I think that we need to be doing what we can to actually increase our enrollment, to actually fix our schools, to transform our schools, so that we can actually up our enrollment instead of just giving our buildings over like that to our charters. So I definitely wouldn't advocate for co-locating our schools together. No. We need to be making sure that we are bringing more of our students in our neighborhoods, giving them a top-notch quality school in their neighborhood that they want to go to our school, not moving over to another side of town.
Okay. Eunade Burrell, what's your take?
Don, when you mentioned that question, the one thing that hung for me was when you said the low enrollment at the school, and based on that, would we, may I, what would be my advice on that? Everything that I've done in my career, from being an accountant and getting a degree in accounting, all my master's level work, my current doctoral dissertation work, everything that I've done required research, backup, and some time to actually evaluate. So the one thing I won't do when elected to this board is make decisions based on this top-level view. Let me dig a little bit deeper into the low enrollment. Let me dig deeper into what's happening with Pinole. Let me really have a framework and take the time, because sitting as a trustee, these decisions are massive. these decisions are massive. They make life changes. And I'm going to take the time to get a broader look at the whole picture as opposed to, and not that we were suggesting just because of low enrollment, do I support co-location, not saying that, but it takes much more information for me before I dive into an actual decision of that magnitude. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jameela Smith Folds.
As an experienced teacher and as school board trustee, I understand that relationship building is a must. Trust has been broken. This is my ward, Penole. These are my neighbors, these are my friends, this is my sister city next to Hercules. Parents, students, and the community voices count, and they've already made themselves very clear. We will have a good neighbor policy because that's who we are in Ward One. We're good neighbors. But we also maintain and understand that our students and their voices count.
Thank you. Okay, 03 Christian.
Yes, thank you. One of the things I look at is having a cohesive environment that we share and build relationship and building our district. Number one, we got to build our public school system to make sure that our public school system is strong. We need to do a campaign, but actually we need to rebuild our district and put the resources into our classrooms, our schools, making sure that all of our schools have the resources. We want to be attractive. When you're attractive, you're able to bring in more students. So, but we must build and grow our schools. And then at the same time, sharing, yes, we can share and be, and build that cohesiveness, and there's nothing wrong with sharing.
Thank you. Dimitrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. So yeah, just like Carolyn, my first response was no, absolutely not. You know, Crespi and Penole Middle, they both have a rich history, and I think it would be an insult not just to that community to remove some of the students from that school and send them to another one, but also to the work that Principal Fleishman and his staff are doing to increase academic achievement and supports for the school and make it better. You know, this is the problem with the charter school laws right now that we need to change and I'll be an advocate for. Invictus Charter School, in their petition, told West Contra Costa they were going to get their own facilities, and guess what? They didn't get the facilities, and all of a sudden, we have to give them a facilities and take that away from our students to give to them. They also went around the community and passed the flyers telling them they were going to provide students a different education that they actually are not providing. Their numbers are actually lower than Crespi's because Crespi's taking students back because they can, families are seeing they were actually better off at Crespi Middle School. I don't have the answer. I want to listen to the community, I want to understand more of, of how we can fix this problem of co-locations, which is more than our problem, it's a state problem. But I would not agree to, to moving students from Crespi to Penole Middle or Penole Middle from Crespi. Thank you.
Great. Question number four. Okay? The 600-pound gorilla has just come into the room. Through some careful financial manipulations, in light of the 48-plus million-dollar budget deficit, the district has found a way to stave off bankruptcy this year. But many people believe the district is just kicking the can down the road. Question, what process would you use to find ways to keep our classrooms open next year? Dimitrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yeah, great question. I mean, unfortunately, we just went through two years that were horrible because we had to cut millions and millions of dollars. And all that came from the backs of our students, the backs from our staff and our schools. We had to reduce site funds, we had to let go of teachers, we had to increase class sizes, we had to let go of grad tutors that worked with English language learners. That is unacceptable. Why would I do differently? I mean, I think that we have to move forward with the current plan of creating cost controls. Part of the problem is that our superintendent was opening schools, was buying programs, and on the top of that, we said our priority is going to also be increasing salaries for our staff, which was the right thing to do because we were the la, the worst-paid district in the Bay Area. But we couldn't do it all at once. We had to be better, and unfortunately, we also weren't getting the right finances. Cost controls were big because every department went over budget in one single year, and that was unacceptable. We didn't have a system to control that overspending. We need to have a transparent system that has oversight controls. The board is fully informed every few months on whatever expenditures are happening, and then also we have transparent system to show the community. Thank you.
Okay, Jameela Smith Folds.
I will focus on the 32,197 students in WCCUSD. They cannot suffer from the gross mismanagement with the budget. What I bring to the board is practical, not theoretical, understanding that giving CPR to a dead situation is a race of resources. And simply practice, just simply practicing checking off the box is a waste of time. To move on to the living, when the budget conversation happens, we have to have everyone at the table. We have to make sure that the relationships that we've maintained with labor are strong and they will help us get to the other side. They've done it before and they would do it again. My goal when getting to the board and understanding the budget is understanding that we need transparency, accountability, and building trust with each other, with the students, with the community, and with the parents. We can do it together.
Thank you very much. Lupi Anyana, tell us what you think.
So what I think is that we need to set the standards, like I said before, especially when it comes to the superintendent. We need to make sure that we're having the right conversations, that we're having the right numbers show up, but I think it also takes community buy-in. We have to really establish that community-building relationship because right now, there, there's a lot of distrust. There's a lot of distrust. So what I would do is really push for a financial audit, making sure that we see exactly where the numbers are and that, you know, we're going to have, if things need to be cut, then we're going to have to talk about it. If, you know, we're going to have to move in a direction of what we can afford. I, I don't believe in overspending. You know, we all like the finer things in life, but I think we need to really focus in on, you know, what could we do right now? You know, building those relationships, making sure that the numbers that we're getting, you know, holding accountability, making sure that, you know, we're talking to the superintendent on a regular basis, not just, oh, well, I think this is where we're at, but really doing our homework as board members to get to the point where then I could trust somebody's word for what they're telling me.
Thank you. Mr. 03 Christian.
All right, thank you. As we deal with the financial crisis, the thing is, is that we must live in our means and not going beyond our means. But also, we need a superintendent that's able to work with the board and that's the board work with the superintendent, that we make sure that we do the right thing by making sure that we don't go beyond our means. And then the community want to see trust and accountability in our district, making sure that we have the resources and making sure we have the, the tools to, to build our students, to build our kids, so our kids can become strong. If we have 32,000 in this district, we want to increase that enrollment. The enrollment brings about more funds from the state. So when we have more, that's why I said we have to do a campaign. But by doing a campaign, we need to look at the resources to specialize in all of our schools. We got to, we got to bring in building trades and bring in things that can help our young people who might not go to college. So we want to be able to have all different venues to help our young people to go to the next level and that, thank you.
Okay. Carolyn Weisinger.
Thank you. You know, in my campaigning, I've learned that I am a part of a group of 40-year-olds who survived the very last West Contra Costa bankruptcy when we were actually Richmond Unified School District. And there is a lot of mistrust in our district, and that starts actually from trauma from that because no one was watching the money then and no one is clearly watching the money now. We as a district need to actually determine what are our core values. Our core values should determine what we are and what we aren't spending money on. We need to get more site-level fiscal oversight. So a lot of times, we're giving money to our sites, but do we know if those, that money that's going to our sites is actually affecting our students? You know, we're, it's sometimes it's like we're throwing gums at the wall to see what's going to stick. We're just throwing money at things and things are and aren't working. We're spending, doing things like spending 1.5 million dollars on our SROs, we're spending 15 million dollars over our budget to add additional AVPs to police our students. We're saying we're not doing that anymore, but that was a result of our value system. We also need to, to explore more increased streams of revenue. We need to build more, more partnerships with public and private entities. Why is it that San Francisco and Oakland can find opportunities to get millions of dollars into their school district, but we don't have those opportunities? We need to be doing more of building partnerships and looking more at how we are actually spending our money that's affecting our students.
Enad Burrell.
When we talk about is the can being kicked down the road, a school board trustee needs to have insight beyond what's in front of them. With my accounting degree, I don't, I do forecasting. What is forecasting? Looking five and 10 and 15 years ahead when it comes to budgeting. Right now, it's my understanding that the budgeting, the financial practices right now, the board only sees those things over $50,000. That's not okay. If it requires a task force to weekly, bi-weekly, every 30 days to look line by line, that is what I'm prepared to do. Candidate Dimitrio mentioned about the, the rates, the, the salaries that the teachers were paid. Well, he is or was at that time part of, the president of the teachers' union and a part of that negotiation. Negotiating something against, against an exasperated budget, that's, that's interesting. That's not good practice. Also Dimitrio, who just cleared his credentials last July, and you can find this online at the Commission for Teachers and Credentials, but then he was able to get a very lofty position. So do we have some quid pro quo going on with that? So leadership has to have integrity. If, if we were laying off teachers, but this candidate was able to get something inside based on what is leadership, it's not okay.
Okay. The mud is slinging. Question number five. For at least the first six months of our term, as a school board member, very good chance that distance learning will be practiced. We're hearing about problems with the digital divide. If this problem, is this problem real? And if it is, how would you close the divide and make virtual learning more effective? Jameela Smith Folds.
Distance learning and the digital divide is very well, is very real. We have, all of our students, we are one-to-one district, and they all have a tablet, but that doesn't mean that they all have the same access to using that tablet. What we have to do is remove barriers. If you want to close the divide, we have to remove the barriers. We need to make sure that they, all students have internet access, all students also have the ability to do the basic troubleshooting when it comes to their tablet. All students may not have parents at home with them all day, every day, helping them maintain and maintain their educational track. What we need to do is make sure that we are involving the community to be those aides to help those students with, with their work. Digital divide means that we are trying to, we're trying to eliminate the gap. And the way that you eliminate the gap is you pour in resources. Students need to have resources, teachers need to have support, and parents need to have help. We, as a school, as a school teacher, the way that I do that now from my house is I put up Jameela's Teacher Tips every Monday. It's a way to help parents not, we're not asking parents to be the teacher, we're asking parents to be a good classroom aide. Help your students be the best version of themselves in a digital classroom. So what I would do as school board trustee is I will make sure that I'm putting the resources into the community, getting it to the parents, so they can help their student and support their teachers.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Weisinger, please tell us.
You know, Don, when I was a teacher in West Contra Costa Unified School District, we had, what, two-hour classes? We would spend the first 30 minutes of those classes troubleshooting laptops. Yet we are a district that, that touts the fact that we are a one-to-one district. That, that policy in itself is very inequitable. I live in the El Street High School District, but I work in the Richmond High School District. So if we're giving students laptops and telling them, "You should be able to do your digital, your online work with this laptop," but none of these laptops are working, that's an equity and digital divide issue right there. So that's the first thing that we need to address. We need to address this one-to-one system that is not working for our students. We need to address the fact that, yes, a lot of our students have equity, have access issues. Many of them may not have online internet at home. Some of them are in homes where they can't stay home because their parents are both essential workers and they have to go to work. They're going to family members' houses, they're having to pay to go to student hubs. We need to really figure out where all of our students are going, how they are accessing our digital learning, and how, as, as Jameela said, how we can address those barriers and break those barriers. But it starts with policies that we already have that we're not being honest about, they're being ineffective.
Thank you. Mr. 03 Christian.
Yeah, thank you. When we look at the digital divide right now, what's going on, this is no fault of our students, our parents. We are in a major crisis in this nation, not only in this nation, but in the world. So if we are dealing with a crisis, see, we never learn from the past, from 1918. And if we would, if America would have been on this job by doing this job from leadership from the top, by making sure that we have every, in other words, preparing our country, when you don't learn from the past, you can't move forward in the future. Bringing on home here right now in this district, digital divide, our parent, I mean, our, our students are suffering. Everything is, is crazy right now. So what's going to happen is when we come up out of this, our students are going to be so far behind that, they, they are lost right now in the midst of this digital divide. So then also that goes back to equity. That, that goes back to how things are being done. So what I'm saying is, we're going to have to, the new incoming board, we're going to have to really be on the job. We got to really make it happen because, because our students are going to need, our parents and students are going to need all the help they're going to need to, to make it through. Thank you.
Dimitrio Gonzalez-Hoy, please.
Thank you, Don. And this question is, is, is very important and shows why we need to have parents and teachers on the board that understand what's happening in the classrooms. I see it every day as my wife teaches and it's working till long ni, works really long nights. I see the struggles our students are going through and I hear it from our colleagues. You know, our special education students are struggling, our newcomer students are struggling, our English language learner students are struggling through the system. And it's not perfect. We're doing it to keep students safe and healthy, and that's why I support that we're on online learning. But at the same time, our district needs to do better to support the students that need more, that need more supports and have larger needs. My wife doesn't speak Spanish, and she has two Spanish speakers in her classroom, so she's not able to go and get support from the person in the classroom next to her. And you know, in the last question, obviously my opponent attacked me, and I don't have to fling mud to win this election. I'm doing it because of the relationships and the work that I have done longer than the last month that she's been involved in education in our district. I have been involved for eight years, and I know what happens in our schools. That's why I feel like I'm going to get elected because I know what we need to do. Thank you.
Ms. Lupi Anyana, please.
How do we close the divide? I think we all have great ideas on how we can do that. As a parent, you know, I, I've struggled. I've struggled myself to learn the different platforms, to be able to support my children when it comes to distant learning. I think, you know, that should have been the first, you know, conversation that we had, having parents at the table, but then reevaluating what we're doing. We went from a system that wasn't working. So our eight to, you know, three o'clock system wasn't working, and we just tried to transform that system into the same thing, but just at a distant. You know, keeping up the same hours, you know, making sure that they, they were learning everything that they were learning in the classrooms. You know, our homes are not classrooms. Some of our homes aren't set up for that. So I think really having conversations around the supports that are needed. You know, a lot of parents can't, you know, don't know the language. You know, our communities are really diverse. So I think we have to have conversations. We have to really see, you know, what the parents are struggling and, you know, figure out a system that's just not transforming from inside the classroom to distant learning one, but really figure out how we can support our children, support our families, and our teachers because they're parents as well.
Thank you very much. Closing out this question, Ms. Enad Burrell, please.
The digital divide has been around, unfortunately, for a very long time. So it has been some inequities for a long time. When we think about, like I mentioned in the beginning, a Chromebook and a hotspot, is that supposed to solve it? I'd like to take a moment for us to think about also the teachers. When we talk about taking teachers from classroom setting and overnight asking them to teach online, it's a very different type of teaching. It's not only a different style, it requires a different curriculum, it requires cultural competency with your students, that connection is far different. So that even expands the digital divide even more. The relationships that, and one that Ms. Weisinger mentioned, the relationships with the tech companies that are giving millions of dollars to OUSD and Oakland Unified, those relationships I've had for years. I can bring those to the table because I've been a grant writer for many years. I've also shared with the district ways of bringing in resources. So we talk about how is this going to work? We do need those other resources. We do need those external partnerships. It cannot happen between us. We are in a distance learning that we've never done before. So we cannot think that current, we know everything. We got to bring in the experts to help us.
Thank you very much. We're doing an outstanding job, especially appreciate, truly appreciate the fact nobody's gone over, at least not noticeably. Question number six. Framing the question. The district has closed through $2.4 billion in voter-approved bonds that can only be used for facilities. Proposition 39 requires a citizens' bond oversight committee to serve as the eyes, the ears, and the voice of the community as they maintain oversight of the community's tax dollars. In recent years, some senior staff and some board members have worked to minimize the oversight of the bond program by the community. Now, the question. Please tell us your thoughts on the value of community oversight of their tax dollars. Start off with Carolyn Weisinger.
I think in all of these issues, the stakeholders who are community members are the center. Everything that we do has to be either parent-driven or student-driven, and we cannot, even in our bond oversight, we cannot devalue the input of our parents. The reason that our parents come to our board meetings upset, wondering where the money is going, wondering why we're not closing achievement gaps, is because we're not giving them the opportunity to come do things like our citizens' bond oversight. We're not valuing their voice in that. So, it's very important that we not just say that we're valuing our community, saying that we're valuing our parents, but that we're actually giving them the opportunity. We're actually teaching them why it's important. Parent education is going to be key on all of these budgetary issues. So, it's important that we're teaching them why they should go to those things, why they should not come to just the citizen bond oversight, but also to our site councils. A lot of our parents don't understand that that's where the site-level budgeting is done. All of these things are things that we need to educate our community about and make sure that they are coming to the table to give their concerns on the front line, so that we're not at the back end at our board meetings facing an uproar.
Thank you. Enid Burrell.
110%. I support community being a part of this conversation. But one of the things that's very important is the education piece. Yes, they need to be at the table, those parents, those students, the stakeholders, constituents, the board, but let's talk about the education of what's at the table. So, we're looking at lofty documents. We're looking at spreadsheets, laws. All of that needs to be dissected. Who's going to do that? I would do that. Take the time before coming to this meeting to actually sit down, and let me walk you through what this is. Let me show you what this is about. So, when you come to the table, you are informed. That piece is always very critical because while they want and need to be at the table, there's a gap between understanding that dialogue sometimes. 100% community needs to be involved, building that community with information, so they are informed all the time, whether it's the bond, measure, policies, board meetings, curriculum, the whole nine. They have to be informed, and I'm excited to do it. It's something I love to do. Thank you.
Okay. Jamila Smith Foles.
So, when I was a teenager, I got a little mouthy with my mama, and she took the door off of my bedroom because she said, "You did not earn the privilege to have that door because you're trying to do something that's shady, and we can't see what you're doing." So, I think that the CBOC and the other agencies in our district that are built by our parents and our community, they are the parents, and we need to remove that door. We need to make sure that we have reestablished a trust with our community, and the only way to do that is to make sure that they have the eyes on the money. Whether you have children in school or not, you're still paying that money to the school. So, you have the right and the ability and the accountability and the transparency should be there for you to see where every dollar is being spent. As your school board trustee, I will make sure that not only that the community is at the table, but they also have the power to speak at that table. It's not enough just to have a seat at the table if you don't have the positional power to make the change at the table.
Thank you very much. Mr. Demetrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. So, I was the chair of the committee that passed the last bond measure and the last parcel tax, and with Mr. Gosny, you know, we spent countless hours and nights trying to share with the community what our district was doing in oversight and transparency. And it's essential that we keep and support both the CBOC and the parcel tax oversight committee as well, that as the board, we support them because what they are doing is critical if we ever want to ask our voters to pass anything else. Now, like I mentioned, our community has been incredibly generous as it is, so I wouldn't support anything right now, but we have to show them that we are trusted with every dollar they give us, which has not happened in the past. Now, right now, our CBOC has an amazing job. I have been able to talk to the chair quite a bit and learn about the process, learn about what's going on at that table. And as a board, it's essential that we truly understand, because ultimately, the board are the ones that are making the decisions with our facilities. So, I 100% support the work CBOC and all of our oversight committees are doing.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lupi Anyana, please.
Well, I totally support oversight on the bond money. So, I have spent the last year of my life in these interesting meetings. We really work hard. You know, we spend many hours at the CBOC, you know, really making sure that the taxpayers have clarity, that have transparency. It's been really, really difficult to work with the board, the current board, because that hasn't been a priority for them. And just seeing how involved, you know, the members of the CBLC are, I always say it feels like a slap in the face when we put so much time and effort into getting the job done. You know, I spent this time because I wanted to learn what the bonds were. I wanted to be able to do that so then I could take it back to the community and hopefully get more members involved, you know, get people talking. I think it's board members that have to take that step forward to educate ourselves, then to be able to translate that into not just jibber jabber, but understanding, you know, words so that the community can understand what we're talking about. So, I have spent time doing that work, and I am continuing to do the work.
Thank you. Mr. O3 Christian.
Yes, thank you. Number one is transparency and accountability, making sure that we have the oversight, making sure that the monies are being spent, making sure the community, because the taxpayers are paying for this district, and the taxpayer has the right to know what's going on. So, the parents, the community at large, has the right to know what's going on. So, we have to make sure, as the board, we do a good job, making sure that we are transparent and accountability, and making sure the bond oversight committee is in function. You have to have checks and balances. And just to say that we still have schools to be built. And then especially with this COVID-19, our ventilations at some of these schools are not good. And just like we in this facility right here, it's a good facility, and the ventilation is good, and the air is kicking in. So, imagine Kennedy High School, Richmond High School, imagine Steege Elementary, imagine a lot of these other schools who don't have a good environment, and the air is stale in there. Well, a whole lot of people are going to get sick. So, we got to make sure we do the job and build in our schools and making sure it's, everything is working.
Thank you all very much. As the current chair of the bond oversight committee, I guarantee you, you're going to get elected, I'm going to flash this video in front of you. Hold your feet to the fire. Okay? And for the people at home, just a reminder, all candidates were invited to this forum. Okay, moving on to question number seven. Okay, it's a nice, easy question. Do you believe that charter schools siphon funds from the WCCUSD? And do you think that the board should learn more about why parents are pulling their kids from our schools? Start with Ms. Enid Burrell.
I absolutely am actually excited and hope that we can learn from the parents. Why are you sending your kids to these charter schools? Tell us the secret sauce. It's my understanding, actually, in looking at the California, the Board of Education report, that there is supposed to be a survey that goes out to those parents who transfer and have their kids into charter schools, a survey that goes out. Looked at the response, it was never sent out. It says they never received it, we never got the feedback. How can we understand the why in the parents in terms of going to these charter schools, sending their kids, if we're not actually looking at and wanting that information? I definitely hope, I'm for a moratorium on any new charter schools, for sure, but I definitely would love for us to really take the time to talk to parents and say, "Teach us. What's missing? What's the why?" All of those things are important. We have to dig deep and be okay with that, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, because it's time to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. O3 Christian. Tell us what you think.
Okay, I'll tell you why. Reason why we losing is because we're not building our schools. We're not building our public school system by bringing in the resources, by having the programs there, performing arts, making sure we have all the different components that can build our schools and make it attractive and make it where our young people say, "Hey, I want to be at this particular school." If we specialize in all of our schools, we will keep our students in the district and not lose them to anywhere else. We can do the job. We have what it takes. And all it takes is the partnership of the community with the big, with corporations, businesses, community to build our schools and make our community a better. If you have a thriving community, a thriving community, that means, that means everybody in that community is going to thrive based on the education that's being poured into these schools. So, as a school board member, I'm going to make sure that I'm to the task because I'm from the community, I'm from Richmond, and I'm going to fight hard for our students in this community. Thank you.
Ms. Lupi Anyana.
Okay, well, I believe the money follows the students, and because it follows the students, then we're losing money. So, I think that term is used because of that, because, you know, they actually do take money from our schools, because every time a child leaves, the money follows them. So, that means that we're left with less resources. We're left with less money to then be able to disperse to buy into new programs, new supports. So, that has been a really big problem. The problem that I also have is that there's no way of following the money. You know, when we're talking about charter schools, you know, we have LCAPS, we have budget meetings, we have, you know, SECs, we have, you know, millions of committees, and all the data is accessible. So, when we're talking about charter school data, it's not accessible. I can't just log into someone's school and figure out where they're putting their money. Well, you know, how are they spending the money that went with the child? You know, because I hear a lot of parents talk about how, you know, our charter school students don't have this, and they don't have that because we're not, our district doesn't give them enough. But I think we need a lot of accountability.
Thank you very much. Jamila Smith Foles.
As a candidate, I have pledged not to take any money from charter school organizations. The only special interest that I have is to these students. And yes, facts are stubborn little things. The numbers show where the money is going and where it's coming from. So, the answer to the first part of the question, yes, charter schools take money from the district. The answer to the second part of the question is, how do we, how do we make sure or how do we understand what's happening in charter schools? We ask. We need to ask. As your school board trustee, what I will do is I will listen, I will learn, and then I will lead. But I want to make it very clear that I'm a public school teacher, and I understand the needs of our public school children and their parents and their community, and it's my job as your school board trustee to make sure that we keep kids in this district and we are attractive enough to bring kids back into our local schools.
Mr. Demetrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yeah, so for the first question, yes, absolutely. Charter schools take funding from our own schools. There was an independent report done two years ago that shared that over $27 million go to charter schools in West Contra Costa, and the district has shared that over $50 million go to charter schools in our district. Now, of course, students are leaving. We have to understand why they're leaving. We have to talk to the parents, we have to talk to the kids. I have visited 13 out of the 14 charter schools, and, you know, charter schools come to our district, and they promise families a different, a different program, something shiny and new, and I've seen, they don't offer anything different than what we offer. We have, and that's why we get families back every year. But we do have to listen to families of why they're leaving. I have talked to them. They share that they have left because of safety concerns. They have left because they're not getting the support that their student needs. We have to listen to them and actually create change. We have to strengthen our transfer policy. We have to strengthen our transfer office, because a lot of families share that they leave because they're not able to switch schools within our own district. We have to be able to provide them those choices. And lastly, you know, it's so critical that we, of course, strengthen our own schools. Charter schools will cease to exist because of the moratorium we have passed, but also if we strengthen our own schools. Thank you.
Carolyn Weisinger.
Well, the obvious answer, of course, is some of the candidates have stated, yes, charters do siphon money from the district, obviously, but there's so many other facets to this conversations that we are not having. You know, as a black teacher who's committed to the collective liberation of black people, I always want us to remember charter schools were originally created as grassroots school, created by the community, things like the Black Panther Party who created the Oakland Community School, to actually be an alternative, to show school districts what they can be if they became more empathetic and centered the whole child. But what happens in any business industry, when you see the already existing institution failing, as our school district has been doing, we have allowed for-profit charters to grow into a monster that is taking money from our schools. So, what should we do? As the other candidates have said, we do need to talk to our parents, find out what they are doing. I'm one of the only candidates who has the experience of teaching both in WCCUSD, but also in charter schools in Los Angeles. I've seen the way that they work. I know the thing that they do different. The parent engagement is the important piece. Once we start talking to parents, finding out what they're not getting, and looking at our own data, we know the reasons that we're failing. We know why African-American students are failing. We are not following through, and we are using charters as a scapegoat to ignore our own failures. If we acknowledge our failures and work on them, we can start to get our own students back into our district.
Thank you very much. Okay, refocus the camera before I get on to the next question. Okay, question number eight. The facilities master plan is the district's bible for determining which schools get rebuilt or renovated. The district is in the process of giving this plan its five-year update. Question. What criteria would you emphasize when ranking the schools on this list? O3 Christian.
Based on the facility master plan of everything what's going on right now, as we in this COVID-19, and as we, at some point, we're going to be coming back to our schools, we got to recognize that some schools' ventilations are bad. I stated earlier, Kennedy High School's bad, Richmond High School is bad, Steege, and many others. So, we're going to have to really look at a lot. What are we going to do? Because you have to have good flowing air that going through these schools, just like in this church right here, good flowing air, air conditioning, making sure that the air is, the environment not stale. So, we got to look at, based on the facility master plan, I know there's an order, but we're going to have to go back and revisit the order and seeing how things are done. I mean, we just going to have to just look at the whole thing. So, as the board, the whole board, and everybody's going to sit down at the table and really analyze this to see what direction we need to go in. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Demetrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yeah, that's a great question, because as we go through this process, and we have passed in Measure R, which is going to bring $575 million, you know, we have the opportunity of rebuilding more of our schools now. That's still not even enough money. We would need about $2 billion to rebuild every single school that is left to, that is left to be rebuilt. And, you know, with this money, we have the chance of actually looking at rebuilding schools through an equity lens. It is very unfair that we only have two high schools that have not been rebuilt, which is Richmond High School and Kennedy High School. So, yeah, I am a proponent of changing the facilities master plan, because we have to ensure that every student goes through a new school, goes through a safe school, doesn't look like a prison. And of course, we have to do it in an inclusive way and through an inclusive process. And of course, I will be a supporter of whatever recommendations come forward to us, but it has to be done well, and it has to take some time so that everybody's included, especially our students.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Weisinger, what do you think about this?
You know, all of my answers usually come from both a culture and a pragmatic perspective as a native of Richmond, whose mother, who is almost 70 years old, graduated from that same building at Kennedy High School, who has worked in Richmond High and has many of stories that I can tell you about, days when the building itself failed us, when the lights went off and we couldn't get him back for a week, being in a building with no windows and no ventilation when it's 90 degrees outside. As O3 referenced, now that we're in COVID-19, how would I get fresh air into my students if we were in that building? Richmond High and Kennedy High were built at a time where there was a theory that if you put students essentially in a prison, a school with no windows, that they would focus. We know that we, as a district, are going away from this policing. It is essential that we put those Title I schools. How can we say that we're going to service our whole children and tell all of our low-income students that we are focused on you and that we see you, and we want to make sure you're a top-notch school, but the two Title I schools are the ones that we are not priority? That has to be a priority in our budget and in our facilities master plan, is to get Kennedy High and Richmond High built, and then we can start talking about the other schools on that list, but that has to be the priority.
Okay, Jamila Smith Foles.
So, I want to make sure that we know that we need to be accountable, and we need to be transparent. This district has a problem. It doesn't understand that you need to measure twice and cut once. So we need to make sure that we bring the experts to the room. My criteria is clear: community input, needs of the students, COVID preparedness, wildfire and smoke preparedness, and longevity and sustainability. As a Hercules resident, I know that's the, and as a Hercules resident and a former Hercules high school teacher, I know what the building looks like. We're still in portables. Our whole campus is portables. That's an issue because climate counts. The way that these kids feel when they go into the classrooms matter. When they go into the portable, it matters. When they go into a building, it matters because it sets a value. It lets them know that we care about them as students, we care about the teachers as the employees, and we care about the staff. We need to start valuing the people who touch our children every day. And we need to make the students understand by the virtue of what they see around them that we value your education. So we need to get started on making sure that we rebuild our schools to where these students feel and these teachers feel and the staff feels valued every day that they go back into the classroom.
Okay. I know you have some ideas on this, Ms. Burrell.
I have a couple, just a couple. As someone who didn't just show up in this educational space 60 days ago, actually been in this space over eight years, right here in Richmond. When we talk about the question, how would I, what are the criteria? I need to let the people speak to me. I need the community to speak to me. I need the social determinants of health to speak to me, particularly environmental. Sitting for the past year and a half at these AB 617 Steering Committee meetings around air quality, I need that research to speak to me. This pandemic also has given us a very rare opportunity to expand anything that we thought we were gonna do with this master plan. Are we COVID-ready? Are we global pandemic-ready? Is it outside of the schools? Is there a grocery store nearby? Maybe we wanna build a fresh fruit something close by. So the criteria is not mine. Everything that I do as a school board trustee is listening to the information, dissecting it, analyzing it, and making the decision that is student-centered. And we keep talking about equity. Equity is allowing all of those voices to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Anyana.
So when it comes to facilities, I really think that we need to go back to the drawing board. I think we need to reevaluate, you know, what our priorities are. Our priorities, you know, change. You know, life has changed. So I think really coming up to what, you know, what are we gonna prioritize? Into, you know, rebuilding, into modernizing, you know, what are, like I said, what are priorities? But we also have to understand regulations. You know, what can we do? You know, sometimes I want, you know, a staircase, you know, floating staircase. Can we do it? You know, maybe not. So really figuring out, I think it has to, we have to partner with the CBLC. We have to be really invested into looking at where the money's going, why it's going there. And like I said, prioritization of our highest-needs schools. So we need to know, you know, what schools are our highest priority and why are they our priority? Some of us have brand-new schools, like Nystrom. Do we have AC? Do we have, you know, air conditioning? You know, we have a pretty new school. Like, we need to figure, you know, what our priorities are, what our buildings need to have in them to be, you know, sustainable, to be, you know, climated towards our children, and really get involved.
Okay. Question number nine. Okay. How will you balance the needs of your ward with the needs of the district? Will you be a trustee for your ward or for the district? Ms. Burrell.
I am a trustee for students. Students are throughout the entire district. So I am a trustee for all 32,000. How do you balance that? Ward four, I'm not only listening to you, you know me. You will know me personally. It will not be the school board member that represents, no, you will know my name. Why? Because I'm making myself accessible. I need you to talk to me. I need you to enlighten me. Let me know what those needs are. Because I have worked over 10 years in equity, diversity, and inclusion consulting, when I go back to the board of my other four trustees and begin to tell them, this is what's happening in four. Tell me what's happening in your area. Let's see, are there any similarities? How can we bring this together? So there is not, to me, a challenge in representing, in the separation of the two. Not at all. But definitely, when we talk about focusing and who I represent, yes, I absolutely represent Area Four. But when we talk about the holistic duty of the trustee, I'm representing the entire district and all 32,000. And it's not about who's the priority, it's about making sure that all the voices are heard and bringing them into a space to reach across the aisle so we can make student-centered impact.
Hey. Tell us, Ms. Weisinger, what do you think?
You know, this question actually gets to the heart of why I am running this race. I grew up in what is now considered Ward Two, so I grew up in Ms. Anyana and Mr. Oh Three Christian's district. At the time, students that grew up on Petronero Avenue, such as myself, did go up to El Cerrito High School. But one thing that has always been true in the ward that's currently known as Ward Five is that the voices of our black and brown community members, our black and brown students in that district were never heard, were never valued. So that's why I say this Ward Five is going to be the tipping point. I will definitely have to make sure that I'm in all of my elementary schools, in my junior high school, in my high school, and advocating for my students. But most importantly, especially in Ward Five, that I am able to look at those things and also look at the needs in a Ward Three, in a Ward Two, and make sure that I am balancing that out because that can be the difference between that equity, between making sure that the students at Richmond High have the same equity and opportunities as a student at El Cerrito High. So that's my balance, is making sure I'm echoing the concerns of my district but understanding that at the end of the day, whatever choices that I make as a trustee is going to infect students all over the district regardless of their socioeconomic status.
Thank you. Mr. Oh Three Christian, tell us your perspective from Ward Two.
Yes, as being a board member, I'm a board member for all of our students throughout the district. I wanna see our whole district move forward. I wanna see our district to be the top number-one district in this area. So it's not just looking at two, but I'm just looking at the whole district. We have to work together. All of us on the board have to work together to make sure that all of our students in this district is receiving a strong foundation that they able to move forward for the future. So we have a lot to do. And as a school board member, I wanna make sure that equity, I wanna make sure that we love on all of our students, making sure that we don't make a difference, all of our background, cultural background, diversity. Our district is made of diversity. I'll give you an example, El Cerrito High School, where I'm presently working. El Cerrito is a diverse campus. But we have to make sure that equity is across the board, that is touching the lives of all of our students, and making sure that every student is loved on. So my job as a school board member is to fight for this district.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jamila Smith Folds, you living way up in the northern part of our district. What do they think up there?
So this is what I know to be true. Hercules and Pinole, we've always been zombies. We've been too dead to be alive and too alive to be dead. But no more. When I get to the board, I am the voice. And to have a voice and to make noise, you have, to be heard, you have to make noise. But this is what I like to understand and like everyone to understand about the district. We're five fingers on one hand. We have to work together. If we don't, nothing's gonna get accomplished. So, but as a classroom teacher, when you have 32 kids in the room, you know that you have to build relationships and maintain those relationships to get anything accomplished. As a mom of three school-aged girls, I know that I have to make each one of them feel loved and valued to get anything accomplished and to avoid a mutiny. So I have the quality of building and maintaining relationships. So as your school board trustee, that's what I bring to the table. I will bring the voice of Hercules and Pinole and Richmond and Ward One to the board. That's what I'm charged to do. But I also will get on that board and work for zone and mediation, places where we all can get along and understand and move our vision forward for the entire district. Remember, I'm one finger on a whole hand, but we have to work together to move.
Mr. Demetrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yeah, so if I'm privileged enough to get elected, I would represent Area Four, and I plan on having monthly meetings with families, students, and staff. But at the same time, I 100% agree with some of the previous speakers. I will represent the whole district. I taught in District Three. My wife went through schools in District One and District Four. I have a variety of experiences and views throughout the district as I supported schools in our whole, in almost every single one of our schools in our district the last few years. But absolutely, I will be elected to represent an area, and I will make sure to represent them at the board, bring their voices to the board, but also lean very closely to my colleagues so that we're all listening to the needs and what supports and whatever else is needed at their districts as well. I won't make decisions just to benefit my district but to benefit the whole West Contra Costa Unified School District. Thank you.
And Ms. Anyana.
Okay, so your question is, how would I balance it? I truly believe in leading by example. I'm not waiting to get on the board to find that balance. I've been really invested and committed to different schools, to building relationships. I go into different schools just to see how they're doing as a parent because I wanna know what they're doing, how they're doing it. You know, if they have something good going on, I wanna see it. And I wanna see how could we replicate it in another. So I'm not waiting. I've been part of the community. I continue to go in the majority of the schools, whether they're my district schools or outside of the district schools, and, you know, that's what I do. You know, I need to make sure that the schools are doing what they need to do for my community. You know, I'm truly invested, not just in our schools, but, you know, also within the city. You know, I try to take leadership roles. I try to make sure that we're pushing our community to get involved. But like I said, I think me being a trustee in Area Number Two just gives me, just gives our voters more accountability. They know they voted for me. They know they can hold me accountable. They'll recognize this space because they see this space all over the place. You know, whether it be in school functions, at different school sites, or just around the community. So I think it's just the accountability and the accessibility that they have towards me.
Thank you very much. Question number 10. Many of our elementary schools are underpopulated, and the state recommends merging these schools. Right now, with the budget deficit that we have, we need to start cutting costs. Considering the cost savings associated with merging elementary schools, how would you address this, Ms. Smith Folds?
In Hercules, there are three elementary schools. There's Lupine Hills, there's Hannah Ranch, and there's Aloney. I understand that there's low enrollment, but I also understand that we have to make sure that we take into the account the needs of the community, the needs of the students that attend these three schools. So the way that we can have, at Hercules, we have vertical alignment. So each elementary school feeds into the one middle school that feeds into the one high school. If we have quality education at our elementary schools, and if we're able to bring those elementary schools together with the community agreement, then we can move forward because then we're making a quality middle school. And then we're gonna make a quality high school. But that's gonna take a lot of conversation. It's gonna take a lot of input from the community. It's gonna take investment and buy-in. So before we do anything like merging a school, we have to understand what that merging will look like. And we have to talk to our parents, our students, and our community. We have to keep that voice at the center of all of our decision-making.
Okay, Ms. Weisinger.
I agree with candidate Smith Folds. You know, and this kinda goes back to that same question about Pinole and Crispy. We need to be having more conversations with our stakeholders, again, our community members, our parents, and find out why our schools are having such low enrollment. The answer is not to close doors. It's not to fold and, you know, take our toys somewhere else. The answer is to have the hard conversation as to why. And then also, we can start talking about how to activate or reactivate the spaces in those schools. Perhaps there are services that we are not providing that we can have in our elementary schools. I know a lot of our students who are already being tracked into special education, which is a whole nother conversation, but there are services that are not being provided at their local neighborhood schools. Maybe we can find out, do we have extra classrooms that we can actually use for our special education students? Do we have extra classrooms that we can use for a restorative justice program? What can we do that actually activates that space that will also have parents wanna come back to our schools? But it goes again and again and again, back to community conversations, stakeholder meetings, finding out what the community needs so that we can provide that for them and not just taking our toys and going.
Okay, Mr. Demetrio Gonzalez-Hoy, do you have any thoughts on this matter?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't believe right now in merging schools. I mean, I think that, like the last two candidates, I agree with them. I think that we have to strengthen what programs we're already offering so that we have students return to our schools, increase our enrollment so that every single school can stay open in our district. I think that we're doing a lot of amazing things in our schools. Deansa High School has an incredible program that has actually increased A through G requirements for students and graduation rates over the last six years. I wanna learn why. Obviously, I know the advisory program is what's helping, but why is that not happening in all of our schools? We need to learn from each other. Richmond High has their academies. That's going really well, and students love that. You know, some of our elementary schools have incredible programs. Valley View has a great SPECT program. We have to increase that. We have to share that with the community. We don't do a good job with communicating our programs and what we have to offer them. We offer an amazing preschool program. We have actually one of the best SPECT programs in the state. So why is it that our parents are leaving? I think that part of that is that they don't know what we offer. But I agree, we have to listen to them. We have to understand why some of them are leaving, like we talked about before. And as our board, we have to provide them what they need to succeed. Thank you.
Okay. Many of these underpopulated schools are smack in the middle of Ward Two. So let's talk to the Ward Two candidates about what they have to say. Ms. Anyana, you're first.
Okay, so my thoughts are, we are sending more money directly to our schools right now. Our school sites are getting the money with the intention that they would be able to spend it on what their students would need. So really figuring out, you know, what our schools are spending their money on, you know, the little bit of money that we are sending out, you know, where is it going? I don't believe in merging schools at this point because we wouldn't be having this conversation if our schools were thriving. So I think, you know, really investing in, you know, what our schools are doing with the money that they are getting, and how could we support them, you know, more than anything. Also looking at, you know, how could our schools put in more revenue? You know, some of our schools have contracts with the city, you know, multi-use contracts with the city that are not being implemented. Well, how do I know this? Because I sit on a lot of city committees as well. And, you know, we have some types of facilities to be able to generate more income that our schools are being able to use, but we're not using our schools to our full potential. And like I said, really figuring out, investing in more oversight under our SSEs. What are the school performance plans? You know, are they just going year to year? So I truly believe in oversight at our school sites.
And Mr. Christian.
Yes, you dealing with the underpopulated, with our low enrollment of our students in our school. Once again, we got to rebuild our school system and making sure that we, our resources are at all of our schools, make it be, becoming attractive. And when we are attractive, we are able to bring back students into our district to educate them so they will have a good, strong foundation to go to the next level. We must do whatever it takes to make it happen. That means we gotta put all of our heart, our mind into all what we do to make it happen. It's gonna take the community, which is our stakeholders. It's gonna take partnership with businesses. It's gonna take the partnership with many people. Building relationship, the relationship is the key. And when we do that, then we will push forward as a school district. And with Area Two, we wanna make sure Area Two shines. Not only Area Two, I wanna see all of our district, all of our areas shine. And it's about investing. If we do it right, if we do it right, we will get the right product.
Thank you. And Ms. Burrell, why don't you finish up this question for us?
I'm always intrigued when I hear numbers and budgets. And I believe what I heard was, based on the budget, should we merge elementary schools? So to answer that, no. Not based on the budget, we should not do that, absolutely not. I also have, over the 25 years I lived in Richmond, watched this district do a lot of missteps. Every time there's an opportunity to close a gap, we talk about students. Well, should we merge schools? Maybe we need to take our programs. Everything is constantly impacting the students. So no, find out what you're doing wrong. Find out what's not working. Let's take a look at that. We cannot continue to sit in a silo and on the backs of students and their learning and achievement gap, close the budget at all. At the end of the next day, if our students are not succeeding, if they are not having a future that they fundamentally are deserving to have, it will constantly come back to us who have sat in these seats and not provided them with that education that they need. So no, merging is not the answer. Let's find out what's going on. Let's talk to community, parents, stakeholders, constituents, and then the fellow board members. Let's come together, bring our ideas together, and figure this out. Thank you.
You, you have done such a fantastic job with your time management tonight that you've earned yourself a bonus question. Nobody else has asked anybody up to 11 questions, but we just happen to have one prepared for you. Feel blessed. Yes. To place a parcel tax on the ballot, it costs the district about a quarter of a million dollars out of the general fund just to place it on the ballot, the same fund that pays for teachers and works to keep class sizes lower. Nonetheless, a parcel tax would help relieve the massive debt the district has incurred. Short question, short answer is all you need. Would you support asking the voters to pass another parcel tax? Mr. Demetrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Right now, no. I would not put a parcel tax on to the voters.
Ms. Jamila Smith Folds.
No.
That sounds brief to me. Mr. Christian.
Let me take my mask off. The answer is no. Now, she says no.
You're saying in such a way he's going to blow the mask off, right? Ms. Burrell.
A resounding and unequivocal no.
Okay, I'm seeing a trend here. Ms. Injana.
I'm going to go with my continuous answer, and that's no, because we are not going to be using our taxpayers as debit machines, especially when we're going through the same crisis that our district is in our own homes.
Okay. Ms. Weisinger.
Because I have to be different, and as your trustee, I will always be different. In talking to community members both within my ward and outside of my ward, they are, one of their reasons they distrust us is because they are sick of West Contra Costa Unified School District mismanaging their money and then coming and asking them for more money. That's what my community says and that's what I'm going to stick to. So absolutely, positively, no.
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
Okay. What are you sure? Okay. Glad we've asked that. Again, it's on multiple tapes. You can't burn them all. All right. Well, I'm sorry, you were also short on that, and I did not prepare question number 12. So let's go ahead and go into closing statements. Once again, you'll have 75 seconds to tell us why we should be voting for you to be sitting on the Board of Education. We'll start this off with Mr. Christian.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for inviting me here today. I'm running because I care about our children and I want them to succeed. My priorities are safe schools, centering the budget around student success, retaining and hiring the best staff of WCCUSD. I am endorsed by Contra Costa County Central Labor Council, Contra Costa Building Trade Construction, United Teachers of Richmond, Teamsters Local 856, State Superintendent of Public Instructions Tony Thurman, former WC trustee Marilyn Cronenberg, WCCUSD trustee Mr. Phillips, former Richmond councilwoman Jevalka Beckles, former Richmond councilman John Z, Neighborhood Council President Joe Fisher, Neighborhood Council President Murda Braxton, Neighborhood Council President Marina Brown, past president Doris Mason of the Iron Triangle, and Baptist ministers including Pastor Ulyss Reddick and Dana Mitchell. And once again, my name is Othi Christian, and I respectfully ask for your vote on November the 3rd. You can look me up, othichristian.com. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Injana.
Okay, well, my name is Guadalupe Injana, and I am here as a parent. I have been invested in our schools and community, and the work that I have done, am currently doing and will continue to do, I think is just an extension. So when it comes to who are you going to vote for, I hope that you go back, look at the work that we're doing. You know, do your own homework and, you know, base it on that. Based on what you think is going to be best for a school board member. I'm here to represent parents. I'm here to bring that parent voice that's always so needed, that has been lacking on our school district. We are always, as parents, happy to be cut out, you know, at the end. So now I'm ready to bring that, our voice, our constant voice to the table. I'm here as a parent. I know the struggles. I've been here, I will continue to be here after November 3rd. I've been here before November 3rd. And, you know, I owe it to the voters. I owe it to the voters to, you know, make that election and, you know, I just, I'm here. Thank you.
Ms. Weisinger, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yes, thank you again, Fair Mead, Hilltop District Association, thank you Hilltop Community Church for having us. And since we're in a church, I'm going to use something that we used to say growing up at Pilgrim Rest Missionary Baptist Church here in Richmond. We talked about being a worker in the vineyard and working for the building. I was trained here in West Contra Costa Unified School District. I'm a product of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. West Contra Costa taught me how to be a leader. And when I left in 1997, I immediately went out and started leading across the nation. And because of that, I've been endorsed by a broad coalition of organizations and electives who support my campaigns. I've been endorsed by the California Democratic Party, by the Democratic Party of Contra Costa County, by Mayor London Breed of San Francisco, Contra Costa Assembly Member Rebecca Barr Kayhan, Senator Scott Wiener, Contra Costa District Attorney Donna Beckton, Equality California, the Victory Fund, the Contra Costa Young Dems, and a long list of elected leaders who have experienced my leadership. I am the only person running in area five who not just use buzzwords, who understands equity, who understands anti-racism, and who will bring that to the board. Vote for me, Carolyn Weisinger, West Contra Costa Unified School District, area five.
Okay. Mr. Demetrio Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for putting this together, my colleagues for being here and for running. You know, I'm doing this work because I truly care about the educational system in West Contra Costa. Like I mentioned, it's very personal to me. My students are still going through our system. I want to make things better, not just things, but schools better for them. I want to provide them with all the supports and the needs that they might have. And of course, you know, my wife is a teacher in this district, my friends are teachers in this district, and they have taught me so much about our schools. As an immigrant myself that went through a system when I moved to the United States that failed him, I understand what a lot of our students are going through. And that's why I continue to push to provide them what they need. I'm really proud of the work I've done the last eight years in our district. I'm proud to have co-authored our Positive School Climate Resolution and worked on that with a lot of community members. I'm proud of co-authoring the Charter School Moratorium, and I'm most proud of co-authoring the Sanctuary District Resolution in our district when Trump got elected. You know, my priorities are going to be support African-American students and English-language learners, continue to work on the staff gap, and retain our quality educators, as well as provide inclusive practices for families, students, and all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jamila Smith Folds.
My name is Jamila Smith Folds. I'm a server. It's who I am and it's what I do. I've been involved in education for over 15 years and have six years of experience teaching in West Contra Costa Unified School District, including last year at Hercules High School. I know our communities and our schools. I will take your voice to the board. I am humbly asking voters to vote and change. This is a movement, not a moment. With my classroom, authentic classroom experience, my parent navigational skills, and the community-centered mindset that I hold, when you get me, you get some good trouble. I'm passionate about you and your children. I know that you have enough to worry about. My shoulders are broad and my commitment is long-lasting. I'm here to work for you. I understand what it means to be a school board trustee because I've been a classroom teacher, I've been a parent volunteer, and I've been a community leader. I know that the role of the school board is to serve the community. I will set that direction and I will work for the people. Please vote Jamila Smith Folds for school board trustee, Ward One. Go to my website, look at the endorsers who have backed me up. I want to take a minute to thank them. Thank you, United Teachers of Richmond. Thank you for allowing me to be the teacher's choice. Thank you to the working men and women in our district. Thank you Teamsters 856, IBW, Contra Costa Central Labor Council, and the Council, Contra Costa Building Trades. I'm thankful to the support of our community. Thank you to Young Democrats, Lambda, West County Democratic Club, Democratic Party of Contra Costa County, the California Democratic Party, and Pino for Fair Government. Thank you to the individual people who see me and understand that I'm here for the students and for the community. Again, vote Jamila Smith Folds, Ward One.
Okay, closing out the closing statements. Eunad Burrell.
I am Eunad Burrell, running for the West Contra Costa Unified School District for area four. The reason, eight years ago, Supervisor John Joya appointed me as a commissioner for the Arts and Culture Commission for Richmond, because he understood STEAM was just as important as STEM. Why I was appointed by Mayor Tom Butt to the Housing Advisor Commission, because he knows my expertise in the social determinants of health, housing being one of them, and not playing a part of education. The reason I was appointed by Director Suzanne Tavano, who is the director of the Contra Costa County Mental Health Services, is because she knew that that piece is very important for education. My platform are many, but let's talk about budget. We cannot continue the same practices, otherwise we're not going to get anywhere. Distance learning is new. We've got to seek the expertise. We need the expertise to bring it in. The digital divide is not new. We need to hurry up and fix that. Every practice, policy, and program will be student-centered. I did not show up just a few months ago, lived in Richmond in area four for the past 25 years, and I am thrilled that the West Contra Costa Parents Council has endorsed me. I'm very happy. Councilmember Gabe Pinto has endorsed me. And the other endorsements, find them on my website, eunadburrell4, the number four, Thank you.
I want to thank you all. And before I close out the forum itself, I'm going to pan the camera over, get a picture of our timekeeper, Mr. Arturo Rintila. He did an outstanding job. That's a really tough job. You've got three bulbs there. Figure out which one, what to push. He did a great job. Thank you very much on that. And one second here. Let me step into the camera. Tonight, we've had a wonderful discussion of issues important to the voters. We hope that voters have learned more about the candidates so when they mark their ballots, they can make an informed choice on who should help lead our school district into the future. This year, all registered voters will be mailed a ballot which can be filled out and sent